Today is Wednesday, July the 11th. This is a regular meeting of the Pickens County Board of County Commissioners. And the first item on our agenda, oh, Rachel Richards will not be here. She won't be here for most of the month of July. She is at the Kennedy School of, John, what's the school at Harvard? Kennedy School of Public Service?
Yeah, it's a, I'm sorry, it's an executive leadership program to the Kennedy School at Harvard University.
So Rachel will not be here for the next couple of meetings. So today, do we have any additions and deletions to our agenda? I believe we do.
We actually have some changes on the agenda. Item number two, the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pickens County, Colorado revoking rescinding B O C C Resolution 37, 2018, is actually a single read resolution. It is not a first reading or public hearing. The next item is item number three, the application for transfer of liquor license. That item will be, need to be continued to July 25th.
Okay.
There needs to be some changes on that.
Okay, great. All right. So this is a portion of our meeting, which is for public comments. This is for items that are not on our agenda. If there's any members of the public, please come forward to the podium, give your name for the public record. Lee's was here first, so, Emzie, I'm gonna get Lee, go first. So please give your name for the public record. Hi.
Hi. My name is Lee Malpakey, and I'm really, really grateful to be able to live in this community. I think you all know I'm loved and devoted to this community. I wanted to bring to your attention that APSC makes arbitrary decisions, and I am a prime example. And for the record, I wanted to bring the final letter, which was sent to when my mom and I were in Kenya on a humanitarian mission, and APSC admitted knowing this. This is October 1st email. And then, on October 14th, Julie Kiefer, the qualifications director, sent me an email. I said, "I want to follow up on our conversation relating to the employment requirement of 1,500 hours per year. I attached the sessions, the sections from the guidelines that relate to employee. I also searched for what the IRS considers as employee. Found an interesting article specific to artist. Some things you could provide include," it's about a list of nine documents. I'll leave that with you. When I took the documents in, when I had my appointment on, this is an October 21st email, this is all well past the judicial alleged deadlines. So they hadn't decided what counted until October 14th. I go in on October 21st, right after, and they refused to look at the records. So I wanted to provide that.
So Lee, are those your original copies for the record? Or are those copies for us for the record? You want to enter those to the public record?
Yes, ma'am.
Are those copies that you have right there, copies we can keep? Or do we need to make copies and give them back to you?
Oh, well, could you give?
You need to check with Jeanette, and if it works out for Jeanette, she'd be happy to do that.
Because I'm also bringing in, we have been in Front City Market, and we've got 2,000 signatures.
Right. We already have those, I believe, and they're making copies?
She already did.
Yeah.
You have the first thousand in '86, and so this brings the kitty up to 2,000.
Great, thank you.
And I thank you for your time.
Thanks.
And I thank you for your love.
Thanks, thanks, Lee. Yeah, so just if Jeanette can make copies and get them back to you, that would be terrific. Thanks, Lee. Next, Emzie, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I have copies for you all once I've read this. The council will have one also. Okay, anyway, my name is Emzie Bees, your third. Today is the genesis for the Pickens County Board of County Commissioners to boldly and prudently modernize its collective consciousness and its collective perspective through action. Establish independent finance departments within the sheriff's office, the clerk and recorder's office, and the assessors' office. Remember, I had done that one time before, for those that were present. Allocate a sufficient money amount for the sheriff and his deputies to suppress any possible covert spying and hacking of them, or you could say, on them, through counter-surveillance technologies, laws, actions, and ongoing training. And that would be a must, ongoing training. If not, suppose Trump stopped his federal government officials coming to Pickens County. That means that the Aspen Institute had nobody around. It could happen. Without debate or delay, raise the salary of the sheriff's deputies to $100,000 a year. It is just common sense and decency. Now, think about it. You have other employees that are not in danger all the time, working 24/7, 365, and they get more than them. And those guys have to worry about germs, disease, and everything else. Thank you very much for your time. And as Benjamin Franklin said, and he created the United States Postal Office, time is money.
Thank you, Emzie. We appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it to the board. Do the Board of County Commissioners have comments? Go ahead, Steve.
I'd like to announce that one of our employees, Chad Federovich, is the director of the Human Services Department, I mean, the Senior Services Department. And he was selected by Governor Hickenlooper to serve a four-year term on the call-out of Commission on Aging, which is a pretty prestigious position, and one that I think he is very well qualified for. So I offer congratulations to him.
Yeah.
And I think he will give us one more good level of representation from the western slope on the state board.
Right, that's great to hear. Any other comments? Greg, please.
Just my observation this morning of hot air balloons flying over the valley, wondering if they were violating the fire restrictions. And in case anybody wonders and wants to call it in, they are not. They are actually excluded from the fire restrictions.
Good enough.
Because hoop and flame is far enough away that they don't think it's a problem, and they also have surveillance and fire extinguishers. But it did make me ask, and I'm sure that people asked as well, to see the hot air balloons that are flying back in action over the valley.
Thanks. Yeah, George, please.
Several months ago, Valerie McDonald, who's our emergency coordinator, came before us for approval for a planning document that incorporated all the response, immediate response organizations and people throughout the valley. It was about 600 pages or so. And that document proved its worth this past week in terms of the ability for all these organizations to come together, united, to fight the L.A. Christie Fire. And it just showed the importance of that pre-planning that has gone on for years amongst these organizations, so that if and when a disaster happens, everyone knows exactly what should be done and how to do it. And the plan from, looking from the outside in, was flawless. We got immediate assistance, we got immediate support. The chain of command was taken up immediately from the Basalt Fire Department to the Eagle County, and then to the state. It just happened like clockwork. And that happening, with that plan and with that coordination, I believe, really saved the town of Basalt, and certainly, and also the town of Willets. That immediate action really did save our communities from a real disaster. So I really want to acknowledge all the first responders, the firefighters who are still out on the lines battling this fire. But thankfully, I don't think we're going to see any loss of any more structures, certainly no loss of life. I also want to commend all the entities that were able to provide constant, up-to-date community outreach. We had a tremendous amount of support from the public officials that held nightly meetings at the town of Basalt High School, informing the public exactly what was happening. Our newspapers, I thought, and are still doing an extraordinary job in terms of reporting the status of the fire and some of the human interest stories. Our public radio stations, KJAX, is doing a 15-minute update constantly. And so I think that helped relieve a lot of the stress for those who were in our impacted by fire, being able to know and get up-to-date information. So I thought that was just extraordinary. Along with the first responders, it was incredible to see all the other organizations that jumped into help, from the Red Cross, that was at the Basalt High School providing meals, the Salvation Army, that was and still is providing meals, down at the Command Center, down at the Eagle County Annex Building. Rafter jumped in, in terms of providing shuttles back and forth to these meetings. So it was a true, beyond community effort, it was a true regional effort, that just shows, I think, the care that we, and the care and the interest and the humanity that we all show, certainly in this valley, when a disaster happens. And fortunately, it doesn't happen very often, but this was a real clear case how this valley came together, and still is coming together, to meet a crisis. So I just want to thank everybody. One last note, as you mentioned, Steve, we had actually, I don't know, an employee, Tom Dunlap, who is a snowplow driver in the wintertime, and our consultant with our environmental health. He actually received an injury when he was on a bulldozer, cutting some fire lines, and a bulldozer rolled over several times. And thank God, he's doing well. He's just had a few bumps and bruises. So thank you, Tom, for your assistance as well.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that we want to wish Tom well, and if there's anything we can do to help him out, please, John, if you could, let us know if Tom needs anything. Yeah, George, those were great comments. Greg?
I just wanted to add to that, that there was a high level of stress. When you went to the public events and the briefings, you would see the stress and the fatigue on everybody's faces in the room. It was very stressful throughout the valley. And I know that Aspen Strong and Mines Springs Health were putting out extra people to help counsel, because people don't understand what the stress does to them, whether it's just makes you forget, and more prone to accident, or, you know, anger, emotions, any of that. And what was nice to see is the mental health organizations were standing by and able to help in, helping people in bilingual, you know, fashion up and down the valley. So I'm grateful for them as well.
Yeah, that was a great response. I'm gonna add to that. John Peacock and I were down, both at the shelter services down at Basalt High School, and at the public meetings in the evenings, and at the Emergency Operations Center at the Eagle County Building. We spent, as you can tell, I'm still raspy voice from spending a lot of time in the mid-valley because of the smoke issues. There will still be smoke. People need to realize, it could be weeks, if not months, we will still have smoke coming off that area. So please, unless you see something that really is of physical or extreme danger to yourself, 911 has been overloaded in the mid-valley with people calling when they see flare-ups or candles up on the mountains, because, I mean, once in a while, a stand of older, taller evergreens firs, pines, I should say, will ignite. So please, don't overwhelm our 911, only really in a case of emergency. Or you can call the non-emergency number, and I don't have it right off, it's a 920-5130, I think? 5310, got the numbers right. 920-5310, that's a non-emergency number, if you just need, think you need to report something, just, a lot of people are uneasy. We totally understand that. We are all uneasy. So there's gonna be smoke on that mountain for a while. They are starting to, what would you call it, decommission on the ground and some of the efforts, but people will still be there. They're still making sure that those parameters, those lines are secure. There's still some open lines, some burning that's gonna happen up into the higher elevations, higher levels, where it's really not safe to put people on the ground. It's rough terrain up there. So it has been an amazing effort. I heard it over and over again from the incident commanders and from the fire ops gentlemen, that they've been to communities all around the country, a lot of them in the western states, and communities really rally, but they said our community was exceptional. The way the communities came together, there were no jurisdictional or political boundaries, no, you know, you spoke English or Spanish, it didn't matter. Everybody was there to take care of each other. And it made me, I'm gonna get emotional, made me really proud, really proud of this community as a whole. And the responses from the first responders, from the people that came in from all over the country, it was amazing to see it all click and all come together. So, before I close, there will be a we-thank-you party for the brave men and women from the L.A. Christie Fire. Please join us for a free barbecue. It's at Escobar Patio. It's the owner of Escobar. He is putting this on. It's this Sunday, the 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They're doing cash donations at the door for the families impacted by the fire. But this is a thank you for local first responders. I think this is very kind of Ryan Chaddick to be doing this. I have some brochures that, they will be around town, but if you want to go by and just drop off cash donations for those families, this is a great opportunity, Sunday on the Escobar Patio on July 15th. So thank you for that. The last closing remark, if you, please make sure, no matter where you live in this valley, that you have a to-go bag packed and ready to go. It's really critical. It could happen at any time, any place, and we've been saying for a while this summer, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So please have that to-go bag packed by your door with your things like prescriptions and your, you know, passports, some of those kind of belongings, emergency phone numbers in case something happens, power goes down, you don't have your phone, you can still have those numbers, because we know everybody lives by the numbers in our telephone, our cell phones. The other thing, too, is to create a list. Walk around your house, create a list of personal belongings, photographs, photo albums, those kind of things that you're gonna want to take with you. Christmas ornaments, little things that you don't need to pack now, but on your way out the door, have a box ready, that you can pack those personal belongings and you can put them in your car. It's critical, because those are things that if they, if you lose them in a fire, you're gonna wish you'd taken a little time ahead of time. So please, remember, be ready to go and get out of there. And it's better to leave early and then find out you didn't have to go than to stay and have it be too late. So please, remember, be safe. So I'm gonna bring us back to our meeting unless there's any more comments. Thanks. Thank you for your time. Okay, next item on our agenda is Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority ambulance services license and vehicle, ambulance vehicle permits. That's a tongue twister, you guys. I had a hard time with it yesterday. Yeah. So thank you. Please introduce yourselves for the public record.
Hi, Phyllis Mathijs, Assistant County Manager, and I'm the liaison on the administrative side of this process.
Richard Cornelius, the Division Chief for Basalt and Snowmass Fire Districts, and Chair of Pickens County Emergency Medical and Trauma Advisory Council.
Thank you for being here, again.
Now, we're to the point, we did a little bit yesterday explaining the creation of this new fire authority, the combination of Snowmass and Basalt requires licensing paperwork be completed, so that they can work toward reimbursement, Medicaid, Medicare, with a start date of January 1st. So this is just the beginning of the process. And I'll let you go on with the specifics.
Yeah, explain to the public this new authority.
Sure. So on December 18th, the Basalt and Snowmass Fire District Board signed an IGA to form the Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority, and so effective January 1st, 2018, the administration from those districts started working for both districts. On January 1st, 2019, all remaining employees will transition to employees of the Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority, and also all the assets of those fire districts will be transitioned to the Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority. The joint board actually meets today, so we'll continue to have board meetings for the Basalt and Snowmass Fire Districts, and then we have a Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority Board that's made up of three members of the Basalt District Board and three members of the Snowmass District Board.
Perfect. And so the public knows, too, it's not just the fire trucks, it's also the ambulance districts and those two organizations that will become one organization as with their employees as of this January 1st, 2019. And so, moving this forward for the ambulance licensing, which we do once a year for the Aspen Ambulance District and for Basalt-Snowmass, those are the ones, we don't do, Carbondale is in a different.
Correct.
So we do that once a year, so we're doing this now, so you can get the paperwork in order for reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid. Perfect.
Per Colorado statute, counties are the ones who license the ambulance services and permit the ambulance vehicles.
Perfect.
So that's the process we're doing today.
Good qualification. So are there any questions from the board? Nope, seeing none.
Well, more of a comment, and we talked about it yesterday, just so the public is aware, there, if you live in one or the other of the districts, you have a mill levy that shows up on your property tax bill, and it's different for the two areas. And we confirmed yesterday that that will remain the same, you'll still pay the same amount. And I really like to see this move, because there are places where one district covered one side of a road, and the other one covered the other side of the same road. So there's gonna be a lot of efficiencies by having this combined.
The other thing to add, too, is that the ambulance, Aspen Ambulance District is a different district. It's not associated with the Aspen Fire Protection District. Actually, this board serves as the chair of, serves as the board for that district, the Aspen Ambulance District. So, but they're still mutual aid. They're still, everybody's still backing each other up, as we have for many years, and that will continue between Snowmass, Basalt, and Aspen. And that's, and we, if need be, Carbondale. We still do mutual aid there.
Yeah, absolutely. When the fire authority is fully formed, January 1st, 2019, we'll continue to have mutual and automatic, automatic agreements with Carbondale, Rural Fire Protection District, Aspen Ambulance District, and Aspen Fire Protection District.
Great. Thank you.
One thing to add to Steve's comment, there are different mill levies that the property owners pay within the Snowmass and Basalt districts, just like there are different liabilities with the bond issues that have recently been passed. So those property owners will continue to pay the same amount of property tax in those districts.
Great. Thank you. Do you have a motion? Steve?
I'll move to approve the ambulance service licenses and ambulance vehicle permits for 2019 for the Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority.
I was gonna let him read the title this time. I tried it once, it wasn't getting anywhere.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. Thank you. Thank you very much. It was nice to see you three days in a row.
Absolutely.
That was great. And thank you for all the work you guys did down in Basalt. Please take it back to everybody personally from us.
Okay. Thanks, La.
Next item on our agenda is a single reading. This is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pickens County, Colorado, revoking and rescinding B O C C Resolution Number 37, 2018, and it's, would you please introduce yourself for the public record?
Good afternoon. Richard Neely, Assistant County Attorney.
Tom Paddy.
Yes.
Does Greg, you need to recuse yourself?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there, Greg.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Greg.
All right, as Patty said, this is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners revoking and rescinding B O C C Resolution Number 37, 2018. This is an informal resolution. I know the agenda is a little bit mixed up, and I'm sorry for that confusion. This is just a single reading. There is no public hearing on the 25th, so. As you know, informal resolutions must be adopted by a quorum of the board. We have a quorum here, so you guys can act by a majority vote here, if you so choose. I know you're familiar with this a little bit, but I'm gonna give a little bit of background for those who aren't as familiar, members of the public. Resolution 37, 2018 was a land use application that came in front of this board, and the proponent, or the applicant, was Closer Investments LLC. Closer Investments was seeking activity envelope and site plan review for a 1,000-square-foot cabin up in the rural remote zone district on the eastern side of Richmond Ridge. The property was, is the Hercules load. They also sought special review for a solar, ground-mounted solar array, as well as to establish setbacks in the rural remote zone district. This board participated in several lengthy hearings, as I'm sure you'll recall, where testimony was presented by the applicants, as well as members of the public and interested adjacent property owners, both in support and objecting to the application. In connection with those public hearings, this board, a quorum of this board participated in a site visit on May 7th, 2018. That site visit was to the Hercules load, as well as to an adjacent property owned by the Larson Family LP that currently has a cabin on it. Larson Family LP was strenuously objecting to the Closer application. Eventually, this board approved and adopted Resolution, sorry, I'm getting my resolutions mixed up, 37, 2018. Subsequent to that, on June 9th, 2018, Larson Family LP filed some litigation, naming the Board of County Commissioners as a defendant in that action, as well as Closer Investments LLC. The complaint sought several avenues of relief from the district court here in Pickens County, and alleged certain deficiencies in the approval. I won't go into detail in the substance of the complaint, but in general, the complaint alleged that there is a lack of adequate notice for the May 7th site visit, as well as a lack of minutes taken at that meeting, some improper communications between the B O C C members attending the site visit, as well as some other substantive issues relevant to certain provisions of the Pickens County Land Use Code. Of biggest concern that my office realized after taking a look at the allegations in the complaint was that there was no location or time in the notice for the May 7th site visit. And the concern in that regard is that certain members of the public who may be interested in participating, or could have been interested in participating in that site visit, may not have had the opportunity to do so. And because of that, the county attorney's office is recommending that you adopt the resolution before you today. That's, that would revoke Resolution 37, 2018, approving the Closer Investment Activity Envelope and Site Plan Review. That's all I've got at the moment. I'm happy to answer any further questions, and I can go on, but...
Does the board have any questions or comments for Ry? Steve, go ahead, please.
My question would be, going forward, assuming that we take this step today, what are the possible courses of action going forward?
Sure, Steve, that's a great question. Assuming that the board adopts the resolution in front of it today, the litigation still exists in the district court, and that litigation would be subject to either continuing and further prosecution by the plaintiff, that would be Larson Family LP, and we would work in concert with the plaintiff and the other defendant, Closer Investments, to see if there's a possibility of resolving some or all of the issues in the litigation. With respect to the application, or Closer Investment LLC's application, that approval that they received will be of no longer any force in effect. They would be free to submit, and when I say they, I'm sorry, Closer Investments would be free to submit another land use application with the Community Development Department, seeking the same or different approval for the Hercules load. I don't know when that would be forthcoming, or if that would be forthcoming. I would anticipate that it probably will, but that is for the Closer Investment team to decide, so.
Okay.
George, did you have any comments or questions?
Well, I think, Ry, you presented this well. I think it's unfortunate that there wasn't a proper public notice, but that's critical for us. And so that was an error on our part, which has led to this. We have taken steps to ensure that that won't happen again in future for other site visits that the B O C C will be taking. So it was a good lesson. And so with that, I would make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion, and I have a second, and I'm gonna make a quick comment. I just want the public to know that this prior week, this is not an excuse, this is I just want the public to know that this prior week, this is not an excuse, this is just a statement of fact, that our esteemed county attorney here was evacuated from the fire area, and he's still on evacuation notice because of personal issues in his family, so I just want people to know that Ry has been diligent in working with us, and trying to get this moving forward as quickly as possible, under extreme circumstances of duress, and I want to thank you, Ry, for taking the time. Ry and I were in communication this last week, between me being, me being in Basalt and him not being in Basalt, because of the evacuation notice, so Ry, we're glad that you are safe and sound, glad you came before us today, and I, too, will be supporting this motion before us, so no further comment.
Is this?
No, this is not a public hearing.
Is this a public?
Nope, this is not a public hearing, this is a single reading item on our agenda, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes four zero. Thank you, Ry.
Thank you, commissioners.
Moving along. Next item on our agenda, Greg, thank you for coming back, is an individual consideration public hearing, another one reading, this is an application for a transfer of liquor license submitted by Woody Creek Station LLC. We need a motion to continue this until July 25th, 2018. Motion to continue, thank you. I have a second.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. Jenna, is there anything else we need to know on this? Nope? Okay, yes.
Should, this is a public hearing item, so if, should see if anybody is here.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on this? It will be continued, we will continue the public hearing along with this until July 25th, but we'd like to offer the opportunity, if anyone came today. Seeing none, I'm not going to close the public hearing, it will be continued as part of this motion. All those, do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you, thanks, Steve, for that. Next item is a individual consideration public hearing, second readings, first one is a resolution approving second quarter budget supplementals. Hi, Connie, please give your name for the public record.
Good afternoon, Connie Baker, Picken County Budget Director. This is second reading and public hearing for the second quarter supplemental requests. These requests will increase the county's 2018 expenditure budget by $1,414,511. That is offset by an increase in revenues of $543,000, for a net impact to budget of And I will very briefly state the different items in this resolution.
Thank you.
The first, in the Elections Department, they would like to provide overlap in the election manager position from the beginning of September through the end of the year. This is in order to adequately train a new employee during the 2018 election cycle while the current election manager is still in that position. Next, in our Basalt building, Mountain Family Health Centers will lease the approximately 9,000 square feet of space in our Basalt facility when the county moves out next week. Aspen Valley Hospital is providing 60% of the support for Mountain Family Health Centers in the lease cost, and the other 40%, the Picken County is providing as in-kind rent. We are required to have that on our books as both an expense and a revenue, so this is a net zero budget request to add the in-kind rent onto our books. Next, public safety, public safety pass-through entities. Budgetary balances for the Emergency Medical Trauma Advisory Council, and also the Public Safety Council, were missed in the Budget Carry Forward Resolution, which the board passed on April 25th, and so we're just adding those back into the budget, since they were overlooked. Then, the Board of County Commissioners agreed to grant $4,000 to the Mount Sopris Historical Society for Coal Basin Monument, and this will be paid out of park dedication fees. In the Road and Bridge Fund, Picken County has been awarded an off-system bridge grant, this is $340,000. We do need a resolution to appropriate the expenditure of this grant money, and this is a net zero budget request, it is for design of the Upper Castle Creek Bridge replacement. In the Open Space and Trails Fund, there are two requests, the first is $10,000 to contract with a firm to design different options and develop cost estimates for structure and utilities on the Emma Schoolhouse lease area. The second request, the county has accepted a donation of open-spaced land by the Red Mountain Homeowners Association, and there are rockfall mitigation concerns on this property, those costs will be shared by Picken County and the Red Mountain Homeowners Association, so this is appropriating the funds for that rockfall mitigation. In the Airport Fund, security initiatives are necessary at the airport, these are to upgrade and expand the monitoring systems, and it's a result of increased flights and intensified focus by TSA. Part of this cost will be repurposed from a wildlife fence, which is being delayed due to possible future construction, and then the remainder of the cost will come out of the Airport Fund balance. And then the last request is between two different funds, and is for ERP implementation, which hopefully will be starting in August. Budget for the implementation of our new ERP was included in the Capital Fund, however, the implementation plan calls for hiring two term-limited employees to assist during this implementation period. Per accounting rules, the personnel need to be in the General Fund, not the Capital Fund, and so we will decrease budget in the Capital Fund and increase it in the General Fund. And so, those are all of the supplemental requests, does the board have any questions on them?
Anybody have questions or comments? Steve?
No questions, but Connie, you've done an awesome job always explaining the different budget items to us, and it makes it very easy for us to understand, and consequently, I think many times, we don't have questions because you've explained it so well, and also this is maybe the third time we've looked at some of this, so anyhow, thanks for everything you do to make this easy for us to understand.
Thank you.
And I'm going to add to that, thank you, because I really appreciate when they all come back on a quarterly basis as best we can, so we're not approving these sporadically throughout the year, so we can see the cumulative effect to the county's budget, so I think that's really helpful for us. And this is a public hearing, I'm going to open this to the public, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the board. Yes, Greg? Motion to approve?
Second?
I have a motion and I have a second, further comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, thank you, Connie. Next item on our agenda is an ordinance amending Title VI Health and Safety Sections 4.48.070CA6 and 649070C 15, 16, and 17 of the Picken County Code on Marijuana Regulations. Please introduce yourselves for the public.
My name is John Ely, I'm the county attorney, and with me is Jeanette Jones, our local marijuana licensing authority.
All right.
So, this ordinance is up for consideration and adoption by the B O C C after a public hearing, and the public has afforded any comment. The amendments to the marijuana regulations are in both the Retail Marijuana Code and the Medical Marijuana Code, and they concern recommendations brought to the county by the county's various caucus areas. The caucus recommendations are contained within the new regulation, and, and all caucus recommendations are maintained and without variation, accepted and incorporated within the new iteration of our marijuana regulations. Briefly, the caucus areas of frying pan, Woody Creek, Emma, Upper Snowmass Creek, Castle Creek, and Maroon Creek, all recommend that no marijuana facilities be licensed in those areas, and those prohibitions are contained within the amendment to the regulation. Snowmass, I should say, Snowmass Capital Caucus area and the Crystal River Valley Caucus area have recommended that cultivation sites be available for consideration, and when I say be available for consideration, they are not automatically prohibited or excluded, but would be processed and then determined on their merits as to whether or not such licenses for cultivation of either medical marijuana or retail marijuana would be allowed. Other marijuana facilities in those two caucus areas would be prohibited, and that would be any retail outlets or sales of marijuana, marijuana products, or the production of infused marijuana products, such as edibles. The other difference that will be put into the regulation on acceptance by the B O C C is that these regulations will no, or these prohibitions will no longer sunset. Currently, there is a sunset in the existing prohibitions of July 15, just a few days from now. The prohibitions, as I briefly outlined them, will continue and survive in the county regulations until the B O C C takes affirmative steps to change those, and those, those steps could be made upon a recommendation of a caucus area, or individual citizen, or the board itself, or perhaps staff. The, the ordinance does contain direction to county staff to, within, or five years from now, to take another look at the matter and the prohibitions, and to interact with the caucus areas to see if there is any desire to change these prohibitions, or to, to change any other aspect of the marijuana regulations, and that is it.
Jeanette, did you have anything to add to that?
I don't think so, I think John covered it very well.
Does the board have questions for Jeanette or for John? Steve?
Well, not a question, a couple of comments. Number one, the Snowmass Capital Creek Caucus, which has always gone by, had the name Creek in the name, and then I noticed on the ordinance that it's, the creek is struck out every time, but it's always been known as the Snowmass Capital Creek Caucus on documents going back years and years, so I think that it should continue, we should keep the word creek in there.
Is there a clarification?
On this ordinance, and it was struck out for some reason, I'm not sure why.
I went by their emails and by their letterhead that that is the name of the caucus now, so I will check on that, David, I believe it is.
Yeah, just creek, and creek singular, was never creeks, but just creek.
Apparently, their new letterhead has eliminated the word creek, so we need to check with them to see if they purposely eliminated, or if they forgot to include, or whatever, but it sounds like they may have changed their name.
The correspondence that I received from them has all eliminated that, but I'll check on it, and we'll put it back in, if it's where they, they agree with it.
George?
Yeah, it may be, because as we know, there was, that caucus split into two different drainages, so Attachment 7 shows the Snowmass Capital Caucus, and Attachment 8, the newly-formed caucus is going under the name of the Upper Snowmass Creek Caucus, so maybe it was to try to differentiate between those two caucuses, so Jeanette, you can follow up on that.
Yeah, that's a good point. So this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item on our agenda? Please come up and give your name for the public record. Hi, Val.
Hi.
Yeah, just go over to that podium, because you need to be on mic, thank you.
Hi, my name is Valerie Braun, and I live in Woody Creek, I'm representing the Woody Creek Caucus, and I'm also representing the Picken County Joint Caucuses Committee that's recently formed, and we just wanted to say thank you very much for taking the time to look at what all the caucuses had to say about this issue, it was a very important issue in our caucus review, in our master plan reviews, and we just really appreciate that it looks like that that's being honored, that time and effort that each caucus has put into this is being honored, and we just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks, Val.
Thank you, Val.
We like hearing that, that's nice, thank you very much. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the board.
I make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, I have a second.
And I do have a comment, one comment. The reason we decided to put the five-year timeframe in is, partly has to do with the fact that it's on the national scene, it's, the situation is changing, and I believe sooner or later cannabis products will be totally decriminalized and maybe totally made legal on a federal level. I think it's only a matter of time that that happens, and who knows when, but maybe within five years, and I know that in my caucus's discussions on, on the issue, some of the people were opposed to, opposed to allowing any marijuana in the caucus area because it was against the federal law, and so I think that, you know, the perception and mood in the country is changing, and this will, having a five-year review process will allow the commissioners at that time, and the caucuses also, to take a look at the issue again, and see if, see if they want to do it any differently.
Okay, that's a good point. So I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, thanks. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. And John, don't move, because you're up next. So this next item is the emergency resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Aurora concerning the Busque Ivanhoe water rights, this is a public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Patty, this is a public hearing and confirmatory reading on an emergency ordinance, resolution that was passed on June 13th of this year. This particular process is mandated and dictated by the county's Home Rule Charter. The, the resolution previously adopted by the board authorized the execution of several documents that established an I G A between ourselves and the City of Aurora, as well as six other West Slope governmental or quasi-governmental entities, as well as the State Engineers Office, Division of Natural Resources. The purpose of the I G A was to authorize the stipulation for settlement and entry of a decree in Water Court Division 2, which is Pueblo, concerning an application that had been filed 2009 by the City of Aurora. The application will allow water, to be utilized by the City of Aurora through the Busque Ivanhoe system, as well as for the benefit of Roaring Fork citizens, the Roaring Fork River itself, and Picken County, the attribution of an additional, up to an additional 1,000 acre-feet per year, to flows of the Upper Roaring Fork River. The intent being that that water once bypassed from the Independence Pass Transmountain Diversion System will be in the river and benefit the river, at least through the City of Aspen, when the river has its confluence with Maroon Creek. That's all I got.
And how long have we been working on this, John?
A long time, well, 2009.
So, been a lot of effort from the county attorney's office, of which we truly thank you. George?
So, John, if we look at today's situation with the fork, and now with the cameo call, if this was in place currently, would we see any benefits, or how would that have?
We would have seen additional benefits to the flow in the Roaring Fork, and the benefits would have been significant, in fact, it would have been, this particular year, if it had gone into effect, it would have been 900 additional acre-feet to the flows in the Roaring Fork. However, this is a dry year, and when the resource, the water resource, isn't available, it's just not available, what this, this I G A and the resulting stipulation and decree will do is a reallocation of the water resource, so that the Roaring Fork River sees more water flowing in it, but when the state is in a condition of drought, or low-flow seasons like we are this year, we will still feel the pinch. If there's no water to reallocate and move around, then, you know, conditions will still be dire.
So then, as you know, the, what's it called, the Upper Roaring Fork Management Plan has come out with, I don't know if it's a draft or a final document, prior to this happening, so now this will be incorporated into that Upper Roaring Fork Management Plan, because some of those issues may start to be addressed?
It might be, it certainly would be a wise thing to incorporate. It might be. It certainly would be a wise thing to incorporate it in there because it changes the dynamic of the Upper Roaring Fork River considerably. In addition to the work that went into the culmination of the execution of this I G A, the county will be also embarking on a collaborative process of further study of the Upper Roaring Fork with a mind to direct the act, the actual application of this additional water into the river. In other words, when should it be bypassed out of the Independence Pass system? And in what quantities or flows to realize the most benefit for the river and the users, the local users of the river and the river flows? That may very well be, in fact, that would anticipate it would be a multi-year effort. But it will be initiated next month so that we have a better understanding and estimation of how this water should be utilized and, and sequenced to get the maximum benefit out of it.
Great, thanks.
That's a really good point, George. I have a kind of a sidebar question. And George, bringing up the existing conditions, crossing the Roaring Fork River right up here that I do quite a few times a day, some days. Is there anything that can be done underwater law right now to allow, say irrigators to tweak the headgates and leave a little more water in the river if they're able to?
There are, there are quite a few actually, steps that can be taken on a temporary basis.
Temporarily.
And, and they can be employed by folks who desiring to do that.
How do we go about that? Can we request or have them start looking at that? Because it's getting, I've heard reports, this was on the frying pan, of significant fish loss coming down the frying pan.
The, the lower frying pan is experiencing elevated temperature.
That's why.
And I, I don't know about fish population loss, but certainly the fish are under stress down there. There have been additional releases out of Rudi, so hopefully that will alleviate some of that stress. In fact, Rye has told me that the, the Fishing Guide Alliance has publicized it and has taken affirmative steps themselves in that regard. The, you know, it's, it's a tough year.
Aren't they asking people not to fish after like two thirty in the afternoon? Right, I'm going to ask Rye. Because I think this is a good, be a good time, sorry guys, but for a public announcement on the health of that river.
Yeah, thanks Patty. The Roaring Fork Fishing Guide Alliance, along with the Roaring Fork Conservancy, which I think you all are familiar with, is a local conservation organization. Along with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, has asked folks to observe a voluntary fishing stoppage at two P M. in the afternoon on the Lower Roaring Fork. So that section is really considered Carbondale to Glenwood Springs. And that also includes a section of the Colorado River from Glenwood Springs on down towards Silt and stuff like that. They haven't done anything on the Upper Roaring Fork yet, but I was at the Picken County Whitewater Park this morning and the flow through there is extremely low. So that may be coming. I know that there's portions of the Yampa River through Steamboat Springs that are currently under a mandatory closure from Colorado Parks and Wildlife. I don't think that's forthcoming here yet, but we'll see what happens with the rains this year. So hopefully it rains.
Yeah, well, and I, I was floating the, from the Carbondale Bridge down to Iron Bridge and the water was warm. It was surprisingly warm. So I know, I know this has been a big issue. So thanks. And people just please be respectful. And I know some people need to do it for a living. Some people do it just for recreation. So the combination of both. So let's just keep an eye on those rivers. So back to the item at hand, any other questions specific to this agreement before us? Steve?
Yeah, John, one thing we've never really talked about is what, how Aurora will use the remainder of the water that was in the whole litigation thing. I presume that they're, they had filed for the change of use in two thousand and nine and as part of the settlement that they would then be allowed to use the remainder of that Busque Ivanhoe water for municipal uses?
Correct. Well, a great number of additional uses. Right now, the water is decreed only for irrigation and only specifically within the Arkansas Valley. So this will allow for utilization of the water for a great many different uses, municipal, commercial, industrial, agricultural, irrigation of any variety, as well as the broadest inclusion of all, which is simply incorporation within to the Aurora general municipal system. So it will, it will be delivered to the Arkansas River, pumped up out of the Arkansas at the Otero Pump Station, put into the South Platte. And then it will flow down the South Platte to Aurora's collect, various collection points along the South Platte and then incorporated within their municipal system.
And what is, what is the volume? I, I see that the, it talks about the hundred and eighty C F S is the, is the rate at which the water could be diverted. So is that, half of that would ninety be for Pueblo and ninety be for Aurora out of that hundred and eighty? Or?
The Busque Ivanhoe system is owned equally by the Pueblo Board of Waterworks and the City of Aurora. So half goes to Aurora or for Aurora's benefit and a half to Pueblo.
So then how does our thousand acre feet equate to the hundred and eighty cubic feet per second that they're allowed to divert?
Well, the, it doesn't equate to the, to the rate of diversion through the Carlton Tunnel, which is the tunnel that transports water in the Busque Ivanhoe system from our side of the Continental Divide to the east side. What it relates to is the total volumetric limitation that can be taken through the tunnel. So of the twenty-four hundred sixteen acre feet, up to a thousand acre feet will benefit Picken County and the Upper Roaring Fork and the rest will benefit the City of Aurora. The way it works mechanically is that Aurora will actually keep physically all of the water transported through the Busque Ivanhoe system, but through their ownership in the Independence Pass system, Twin Lakes. A proportion of their interest in the Independence Pass system will be bypassed at Grizzly or at Lost Man and left in the Roaring Fork River.
So there, there should be no visible change in the frying pan river because the?
Correct.
They'll continue diverting the same amount?
Correct.
Where we'll see the differences on the Roaring Fork because they won't be diverting as much to the Twin Lakes?
Correct.
Specifically in the Upper Roaring Fork?
Right. And the Upper Roaring Fork has been the focus of concern. I mean, when you deplete flows anywhere, it can be of concern. But the status of the frying pan is simply better than the Upper Roaring Fork, not having land development along its water course, the upper water course in the frying pan river basin, like we do here in the, in the Roaring Fork. And the Roaring Fork long being recognized to have holes, if you will, below certain points of diversion where the, the, the water quality and the water flows are significantly changed.
Good question. So this is a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So I'm going to open this up to our members of the public wishing to speak on this item. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Steve?
I'd move to approve the emergency ordinance approving an I G A with the City of Aurora concerning Busque Ivanhoe water rights.
I'll second that.
And I want to thank you, John, and, and your staff. You and Laura have done a huge job doing this. And Rye's been backing you up on this side of the mountain over here. But yeah, it's incredible. It's taken a long time. And I can't wait to see next summer because this won't take effect until next year.
Correct.
That we, we'll have more river, more river in the water, more water in the river in the Upper Fork. And I think that's critical. So thank you. Thank you guys a lot.
Thanks.
So I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. You did it.
Well done.
Yeah. All right. Next item on our agenda is a resolution granting annual review approval to the Elam gravel pit special review permit two thousand and seventeen operating season. Been a while since I've had the pleasure of seeing you in front of us. Seems I've been seeing you everywhere else in town, but.
Just give me one second. I'm going to pull a map up for this review. Okay. Thank you, Mike Kramer with Picken County Planning Staff. And as you said Patty, this is the annual review for the Elam gravel pit. And this is the two thousand and seventeen operating season that we'll be looking at. Sitting next to me is John Mueller, who represents Elam Construction. And I think we all know where the gravel pit is, but just for the benefit of the public, there's a map up on the screen. And the Elam gravel pit is highlighted in blue as I follow my red marker here. It is to the east of Upper River Road and south of Woody Creek Road. The pit, this is an aerial view of the pit, two thousand and seventeen aerial. And for some background, for those board members who haven't had the benefit of doing the special review and the annual review every year, the pit has a phase one operating area of right here. This phase one area has been mined out and Elam is currently taking intake of materials to fill in the phase one pit area. And that phase one pit area reclamation is happening right here. The entrance to the pit is down to the south where they have the scale and the offices. And to the west over here, they have their seasonal workers and worker housing for the pit. And then to the east is the phase two area, which was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in two thousand and nine. And this phase two was essentially an expansion. It allowed Elam to mine more gravel out of their property. And as you can see on the aerial here, that mining is currently happening. And John can fill us in on the rate of mining and what's expected in the future for two thousand and eighteen and so forth. Part of our annual review involves some consideration for the neighbor to the north, which we've been calling the Braun residence. And I can tell the board that the Brons have sold the property. No longer are the owners, so I don't think we see them here today. But we do acknowledge it as the four hundred and eighty foot residence because it's four to a hundred and eighty feet from the phase two mining area as far as where the expansion was approved. Elam has some cer- certain operating requirements in their two thousand and nine approval and then some subsequent approvals by the Board of County Commissioners. Namely, these requirements revolve around how the phase two expansion area gets mined. As you can tell, as you travel up and down Highway eighty-two, Elam's required to stay on the, the west side of that big, for lack of a better word, berm as they're mining. And they obviously have been accomplishing that. We can see that every time we go up and down the valley. They also have some noise monitoring requirements, which the applicant has put in their, their packet. The, the two big decibel level limits that Elam has are that they have to maintain a fifty-five decibel level, decibel level limit at the property line while they're, while they're mining. John has provided that information. There were a couple spikes in that noise monitoring protocol and we can ask him to clarify on those spikes. The second big decibel level, level limit that's established as part of this review was the forty-eight decibel level limit at the, at the Braun residence, the former Braun residence. We, Picken County, Community Development and Environmental Health did not receive any complaints for noise this year. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Other aspects of our review require, consider dust and dust suppression. Elam is required to maintain a certain dust level and, and water haul roads as they're mining. And that's evident that's happening. We did not receive any dust complaints this year. And then as some board members will remember, a big part of the phase two expansion area included planting of trees. And I'm going to use my pointer up here to show where that phase two expansion area is, where the trees went in. But basically, I'll outline the, the phase two area as so. And then this is the, the road that accesses the, the north, northeast side and then west side of that phase two area. Elam in two thousand and nine was required to screen, using vegetation, to screen the residents up here from the phase two pit area right here. And that included a, a number of plantings, specific plantings. We had conditions in previous approvals regarding number of trees, types of trees, irrigation requirements and so forth. And over the course of the last, I think now three years, Elam has done just a great job getting that landscaping to establish, to water that landscaping and it's thriving. So staff hasn't had an issue with it. We can ask John to give us an update on any, any further consideration in the landscaping. So those are all the review requirements. And over the course of us doing these annual reviews, these are public hearings and the board has the ability to approve the annual review, modify it or revoke it. And the board, over the course of the years, has modified some of these requirements. And you can see that as outlined in the, the draft resolution. One of the, the things you'll notice is that we had a, quite a lengthy condition requiring the applicant and the property owner to the north to continue talks, if you will, and consideration for alternative mining plans for the phase two area. The previous owner was concerned about the visual impacts, the noise impacts, the dust impacts. And staff, our staff, Picken County, and the applicant in Elam met multiple times over the course of the last two years to try and come to some type of agreement that could essentially mitigate and maybe lessen some of the impacts. And we went around and around about it. We talked about master plans for the property. We've, we've talked about the final cover of the pit and what it would look like. Elam at one point submitted a, a final plan for the pit, which involved subdivision of, of the property into multiple residential lots, which as I outlined in the memo, is currently, is not a proposal at this time. And if it would be, it'd be many, many years from now where that would come into play. But with the property owners leaving to the north, those conversations and requirements in that previous two thousand and sixteen operating approval have ceased. We have not spoken with the new property owners. As far as I know, they received public notice for this annual review hearing. And staff proposed to take that condition out of the, this resolution if the board saw fit. And if we hear from the neighbors, we're more than happy to meet with them and talk with them about the, what the Elam approvals are and what they require. But at this time, we haven't made contact with them. So that's the background. And you have a draft resolution in front of you with some very standard conditions requiring soil sampling for intake, water sampling for a small pond that, well, runoff pond that exists in the lower part of the pit. And it's a pretty standard resolution, but if you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
Great, thanks Mike.
Yep.
Anybody have questions for Mike? Steve?
One, first question has to do with the equipment on the conditions. It lists specific conditions, CAT three forty-five B TracO and three Volvo eight thirty rock trucks. Well, Elam might change their equipment to something comparable that's not exactly that equipment. And it seems like the condition should say, or something of comp, another brand or make of a comparable size might be better wording for it just to, so they don't end up changing the equipment they're using and, and therefore they're not in exact compliance with the, the condition there.
So that's page two of six of them. Right, Steve?
Yeah, it's on the second page of the.
Yeah, of the.
Staff memo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we have Elam address that or can you address it for us?
I can address it partially and maybe John could tell us how they, how they mine today. But that, that condition was placed in, in approval by the board in two thousand and twelve. And it was approved at a time when Elam won a bunch of bids for repaving Highway eighty-two. And I think it was the county road repaving Maroon Creek Road, Castle Creek Road. And I think maybe McLean Flats got, got repaved portions of it. And the approved mining method at the pit, the phase two expansion area, required that Elam point exhaust and mufflers away from the four hundred and eighty foot residence. And the mining was going too slow. And so they came in for an amendment to their mining plan with the Board of County Commissioners. And they had engineering studies and noise studies. And, and what Elam wanted at the time in two thousand and twelve was to use this equipment, which may have exceeded the decibel level limits at the property line. So with these conditions, they could achieve compliance with the decibel level limits. And that was the purpose behind the condition. But we could certainly ask Elam if that's still a pertinent condition in their mining plan.
So, so hold on John, I'll let you present that as part of your.
And then one other point I'd like to. And then one other point I'd like to make is on the noxious weed control. We do have a new noxious weed in the county that we have classified, which is Horiolysum. And there is some of it present in the McLean Flats area, not too far from the gravel pit. So I'd want to make sure that the company doing the noxious weed control is aware of that and is on the lookout for it on the property. I have no idea if it's on Elam property, but it's close enough in proximity to where I know that there is some, that I think it could very well have some of it there on the property.
And what was the name of that again?
Horiolysum.
I would imagine that since it's going to be on the Picking County list, that any of the weed control people in the county will now be alerted to that. But that's just a good heads up. Yeah, thanks Steve. Any other comments or questions from Mike's presentation? So John, please introduce yourself to the public. And if you wanted to start off with addressing Steve's concern about specifically listing the brand names of those heavy equipment pieces, we cannot forget to do that.
John Mueller. John Mueller with Elam Construction. As you mentioned, the equipment has changed over the years. I believe we're using like size of that. And there it's not specifically to the part number or the equipment number, but it's like size. We've, they used to use just the D9 dozer and push down the hill, but in a sense, that becomes ineffective in an operations standpoint. So we started using the haul truck and an excavator. And then that's how we, you can see in the aerial how we benched it down so we have roads that weave in and out. So to that, to your original comment, Steve, I would agree. I think that that would be something that Elam would definitely be interested in order to maintain compliance and not get technical about what exact piece of equipment. But back to Mike's comment, it was done or permitted as such that it was engineered. So we'd have to ensure that those pieces of equipment are meeting those standards of air pollution at the property line. This is speculation, but I think the newer technology of the mufflers in the equipment is going to be device that, or I don't know, I'm not speaking to exact term right now, but I would feel that it would be better than it was 10 years ago.
Great, thank you. So Mike, is that something we can address then? And you can work with Elam to come up with some better language that suits the equipment they're using today as long as it stays in compliance with noise issues?
Yeah, understood.
Thanks. Any other specifics for... Okay, John, do you have more presentation? You'd like to address maybe the spikes in the noise or any issues you have with the continuing neighborhood meetings?
As far as the master plan or meetings with the neighbors, I mean, we've always been open to talks with anybody in the neighborhood about any concerns that Elam has. You know, we know we're kind of a focal point in the area. But we take, you know, the Woody Creek Caucus, whoever it is, we're willing to meet with. The one thing about the conceptual plan that we met with Mike on is there's rumors of Aspen, or the pit going to be, is going to be some kind of reservoir for the city of Aspen. We don't even know where the pit's going. We're taking in so much import at this time, we're almost like a landfill more than we're selling gravel. So to sit on one master plan for housing development might not be, you know, it's going to change in five years. So just to address that.
Okay. So how does the board feel about the continuation of meetings with the neighbors? The specific neighbors that no longer live there and the new neighbors who received public notice who did not respond? And I'm sure, as both Mike and John have said, if an issue came up, they would call a neighborhood meeting or caucus meeting or whatever entity was expressing concerns.
Does the caucus still get as a referral?
Yes, they do.
So that can continue? And then you've got the name of the new owner of the Braun property?
I don't have the name, but it'd be easy enough to look it up on the assessor's website.
So they could be notified. So I would continue, I mean, we want to have these, I think we want to continue these annual updates.
Oh yeah, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that they were pretty frequent meetings with the neighbors, I believe.
Well, I think that's, that would be really up to the neighbors if they feel there's a need or urge to do that, or at least get up to speed. But I wouldn't prohibit it.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying prohibit it. I just don't think we need to mandate. I think if an issue comes up, we need to make sure it gets to the neighbor or whoever is issuing the complaint. And if that's not resolved, then it can always come back to the board at any time during the year. So...
Sounds good.
Yeah, and I do have a question driving by. You used to be able to see the trucks up there, you know, on those levels, on those benches. I haven't seen them driving by. I mean, maybe it's because I'm not driving by at the right times, but it's obviously slowed down?
Yes, yeah. We've experienced a significant decrease in volume as far as the need to produce gravel. So we're still actually selling our production from last year. So we haven't even been up there as far as mining is concerned.
The other question I have, there's a big rock in the middle of that crater place. And it means that that is in a secure place? I mean, and you can see it from the highway. And it's right in the middle of where you guys have been excavating. There's like a band of gravel and then there's like a significant rock.
I don't know which one. Exactly, point two, there's a lot of rocks up there. Yeah, I'm sure they, there's some sizable boulders. And typically, when we get one that you can't lift with an excavator, we have to get a dozer and just push it around.
Yeah, that's pretty good sign. Well, at least that's what it looks like from the road. We keep an eye on you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll go up there and take a look.
Yeah, well, we keep, you know, we watch. Like you said, it's a focal point when you're driving mine, it's a focal point in that neighborhood. And over the years, we really appreciate the great job that Elam does to listen to the neighbors and try and rectify any issues. And I'm glad to hear the landscaping has taken. I know that's been a huge issue for many years. So I think that's great. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Because this is a public hearing, I believe.
Would you mind just pointing out, just so for reference, where the Woody Creek Tavern would be? So people understand where we're... Just, it's the one geographical interest point that...
I'm not sure if I could point to the exact...
It's probably right in the middle.
I think we're looking somewhere in there.
Right about in there, right, thank you.
Yeah.
Just so people understand where we're, what we're talking about. And this is completely invisible, of course, but from the tavern, but that's, it's just right up over the hill.
And that's a good point, but I don't know if Elam had anything to do with the Holy Cross power pole that has the osprey nest? Were you part of that? It's, I don't know if any of you have seen it. You can sit at the Woody Creek Tavern on the patio and watch the ospreys. It's really neat.
Yeah, a little, sorry, I don't want to take too long, but it actually landed on the power poles.
Right.
And we lost electricity for like a day and a half. So we're like, oh, we got to do something about this, but we can't. So we originally tried to put the orange caps.
Right.
He made a nest right in the middle of the caps. So we lost power again. So we finally got in touch with Holy Cross Energy, and they said, oh yeah, we'll pull it up. So he took a year, but he finally got a nest built, their juvenile osprey.
Their juvenile osprey?
Yeah. So he finally got a nest established because it kept blowing off. So they put some forks on there to kind of help him out. So he's got to go.
It was amazing to sit there and watch them. They were, the both of them were sore. It was a hot day, so they were just taking off on the thermals. And it was fascinating to sit there at the tab, you know, and be able to watch that. So thank you, thank you for that effort. Because, you know, we've taken a lot of efforts with that, with our open space and trails. You know, down at Emma School, across from the Emma School, it's pretty neat. We have another nest on the pedestrian bridge down in Emma, which we are, there's our young couple that's hanging out there. So... Great.
I was just thinking, if the ospreys shut the power down twice and didn't get electrocuted twice, he must be pretty smart, he or she. Or maybe that's why it's taken her so long to move to the new location.
Yeah. We don't know if they've had any, if they had any eggs. We don't know if there's any young ones in there yet, so... But thank you, thank you for that effort. So I'm seeing that close to public hearing, bringing it back to the board. I do need a motion to approve.
I'd move to approve the resolution granting an annual review approval to Elam gravel pit special review.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I second. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. Thank you. Nice to see you again. So next item on our agenda is a resolution approving the Celestial Land Company LTD reinstatement of vested rights. We have a notice here to continue this item until September the 12th, 2018. This is also a public hearing. Are there any members of the public here today wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will continue the public hearing if the board approves to continue this item.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any other comments? Does staff have anything to add? Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is continued to the 12th of September along with the public hearing. All right, we are going to open discussion.
Thanks, Patty.
You can't believe we're already there.
I know, you caught me off guard here.
We had a discussion about how this meeting would run today, and I think I'm winning, so...
You are winning right now.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
So just a couple things for the board. First of all, there's a conversation starting with Representative, I think Representative Rankin, who has suggested incentivizing expenditures under some of our human services funding, specifically around child welfare, to underspend allocations. And as the board is aware, historically, particularly smaller rural counties, because you don't have as much in ways of economies of scale, tend to overspend the allocations from the state. And then there's a reallocation at the end of the year, shoring up when we've overspent. They're looking at changing that process, which we think would have a negative impact, particularly on smaller rural counties. And so we were going to invite our local representatives as well as Rankin, who's a member of the JBC, just to come and have a visit. And so we'd probably be looking for, you know, one or two board members to be part of that. But we want to add quickly, because that conversation is starting, we felt that was in line with past board policies, so we've started reaching out and, you know, unless the board wants us to back up on that. But we'd like to just invite our representatives to the table to represent the concerns.
So you're talking, and Millie?
Mm-hmm.
And Carrie?
Carrie and...
I think it'd be great. It's too bad, because we just saw Representative Rankin at the EOC down at Basalt. Yeah, but, so we'll just see who can attend and we'll see what the date is. Yeah.
And then you, I believe, had interviewed an APCHA applicant?
Yes.
And...
Carson?
Yeah, so we, the city has not interviewed them yet. Lee Mulcahy also applied. The city did interview Lee, but Lee has not applied with the county for that same role.
For the same joint seat?
Yes.
I thought the city was interviewing Carson right after, the same afternoon we interviewed him, and I thought they approved him.
Well, if they did, we haven't gotten that. So you may be ahead of us on knowing what's happened.
Yesterday. That was yesterday, right?
Yeah, so...
Did they, yeah?
We did, and I thought he was...
Yeah, I think he's a good candidate. I would like to go ahead and approve him on our end as, oh, we have to wait till if Lee is, if Lee has applied, we have to listen to him.
Well, he hasn't applied with us. So we just wanted to let you know they'd interviewed with the city, but we haven't gotten any application.
Because it's a joint seat, so he has to apply with both.
Yeah.
I guess we should wait for that clarification, but...
I don't know why we would interview someone who has a lawsuit against that organization, frankly.
I don't know if there's anything that we can do to not, just, you know, with our, with our building code, we do...
In the past...
Looking at John Ely to see if there's anything that mandates we, or guidelines?
The board, over time, has kind of gotten into a pattern of conduct and interview scheduling and so forth based on a trigger of simply filing an application. But to George's point, there's no obligation to interview candidates that you feel, for whatever reason, are not currently qualified to hold the position.
So the board in the past, and it is completely at the board's discretion, the board has interviewed Lee for other positions. And then subsequent to that had declined interviews simply because they, the board had interviewed him before. It's really up to you guys what you'd like to do there. But the board has declined to interview applicants, just as John said, in the past, either because of...
Issues.
You knew, or because you've previously done interviews and felt like it probably wouldn't be worth the applicant's time or years.
Well, it's really up to the board. I myself, seeing that the issue at hand with him is really weighing more on the city level, and the city chose to allow him an interview, is my understanding. I feel that, in all fairness, I would prefer to allow him an interview, but it's really up to the majority of the board. And since he hasn't really even applied to us yet.
Yeah, I mean, whether it's this person or someone else, I just feel that if someone has a standing lawsuit against the board that they wish to apply for, it's not appropriate.
Well, but it's interesting that the city allowed him an interview.
Yeah, but who knows what the city does and why they do things. But that doesn't mean, for me, that's...
Good point.
So that's...
Well, since he has not applied with us yet.
That's my comment.
Well, I remember yesterday when we were interviewing our one applicant, it was stated on the packet that there were no other applications that had made for the position.
But is the, is it still open?
Folks can still apply, yes, but we have not received an application. It's kind of, we leave that one open until...
Well, yeah.
So if the board is comfortable with the applicant that's in front of you, you can make that appointment. And if we receive applications, we can check back with those folks for future vacancy.
Usually in the past, for joint appointees, either the city, if they go first, or we go first, if we approve someone, we inform the city that we've approved this person. So that helps in terms of their deliberations.
Right.
And then, as we talked about yesterday, there is an alternate in that position already. And so I think that the conversation should be, you know, should we promote the alternate into the standing position and then...
So actually, you guys already gave direction, I think, to support that. That was John Ward, I think, moving into the regular position. So this would be for the alternate.
So my question would be, let's find out what the city did yesterday afternoon. They interviewed both candidates, and which of those two candidates they selected. I think they'll know the answer to that. And then I would be comfortable appointing Carson to the seat. But let's just, to be clear, find out what the city's action was yesterday.
So while I'm here, just a shortened version of that would be, if they did appoint Carson, this board would be comfortable supporting that.
Right, that's a shortened version. Thank you.
Okay.
The other question was whether the alternate actually wanted to take the regular position.
Mike was going to clarify that with him.
Yeah, that needed to be clarified, first of all, whether...
Right.
Whether the alternate wants to step up. And he might be happy just being the alternate.
All right, John, you do...
So just to be technically correct, we should wait and find out.
Well, then we'll appoint him to the other seat. We'll appoint him to one seat or the other, so I think that's what we're...
I just want to clarify the standard protocol, regardless of who's applying. In a normal situation like this, would we decide on a day like this that we could just spontaneously appoint Carson, or we put it on the next agenda?
Yeah, so it's really getting direction to prepare a resolution to make the formal appointment.
And come back to us formally.
Got it. And if someone else came in, anybody else came in and wanted to apply, that could change. And so I would say, let's stick with the protocol.
Yeah.
Right.
So it'll be back on, in two weeks. And if somebody comes in in that two weeks, we'll pull the reso, and we can decide what to do with that.
Right.
But nobody has applied so far.
Okay.
John, did you have others?
Just a reminder, we are preparing to make our move from the Basalt location and the old courthouse into our new facility. That move will be starting on Monday and really going through the 19th. All departments should be up and operational in the building on the 19th.
Bigger question, do we have a CO?
We are in our final inspections for those, and there's quite a bit of work going on to finalize things. We are expecting the CO tomorrow.
Great.
Is Rich away or out on...
He's evacuated.
Evacuation leave?
He's here, somewhere in the valley, yeah. So he was, he's back at work, yeah.
Okay. I just had a question regarding, because I dumped a load of books on him earlier in the year, and I thought I should at least go get those back so he doesn't have to move them.
No, he's back in his play, oh, move him back up here. Oh, yeah.
Right.
There was an issue, and I haven't, I apologize to Rachel, I haven't had time to read it. She sent us an email about social security, or did anybody else get it?
I saw it, I didn't...
You did? And she wanted us to think about writing a letter?
We could, let me see, I can find it for you, Patty.
Yeah. Yeah, so why don't we, protecting social security, I just found it. John, did you get it? Kara got it. It's the Colorado Fiscal Institute. She may, we may want to consider a formal letter, Senator Bennett and Senator Gardner. It was from Rachel. So why don't we have Kara look at this, it went to her?
You don't see, I'll forward to you, John.
Yeah, no, thanks, George. So let's just keep that on the table for maybe Tuesday. How's that, guys? Is any other open discussion from other board members? George?
I got a couple things. While we're talking about board appointees, we also interviewed Barbara Reed yesterday for Healthy Community Grant Committee.
Yeah, so we did get another application for that position, so we're going to try and schedule an interview and then bring that...
There's two open seats on that board.
I thought there was one.
No, Missy told us there were two.
We were told yesterday, yeah.
I would really like to port her in.
But I thought there were two, I thought we were told there were two open seats.
Why don't we double-check? It sounds like if there are two open seats, right now, at least I'm hearing from two of you, that you'd like to appoint Barbara. If it's one, I'd suggest we hold off until we do the... So is that, is that the board's direction, and so we'll clarify that.
Neither one of these are easy. Yeah, I would be to say we're supporting Barbara's appointment to the open seat. If there's a second open seat, we'll interview, if not, we'll hold the appointment for Barbara till we interview the next candidate.
John, just a question about August 7th ceremony, is that at noon?
No, the ceremony, we had nine o'clock, we're doing a photo op here on the graph. It starts from 10, the regular ribbon-cutting ceremony starts at 10:00.
10:00.
With live music, food, the, what do you call those, box those 100-year...
Time capsule.
Time capsule, totally, those boxes you put in the ground. You dig them up in 100 years and hope they're still there. We'll be doing that at the same time, and the public is invited. And we are sending formal, beautiful, written invitations to elected officials in the valley, and we will be emailing, I've had some interest, having just met with congressional representatives, their staff, who are interested in maybe joining us, so we'll just send them out in email invite to those different offices. That would be Cory Bennett, I mean Cory Gardner, Michael Bennett, and Scott Tipton's office expressed interest.
I have a couple other items.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
I mentioned this last week, in terms of the used vehicle lot on Highway 2, so it's been a week now. The boat and trailer are still there, the truck is still there, and there's a car still there.
Well, George, with all due respect, we've been dealing with other issues, our law enforcement has been...
No, I understand that, I understand, but it's...
Yeah.
Anyway, just as a reminder. And last, dealing with these other issues, I think it would be appropriate for the board to consider contributing from our discretionary fund to those families that lost their homes. I think there's a, Aspen Community Foundation is accepting Old Nations. I'm not sure how they're distributing it, but I think we should look at helping out those families.
I totally agree, and let's find out what the direct, you know, there's the GoFundMe page for the Williams family, that was raised almost 17,000 the other day, which was huge. And, but let's find out the best place to do that, and then bring it back to the board, maybe on Tuesday, if we can. That's a great idea, George, thank you for bringing that up.
And it was Aspen Community Foundation?
I thought I read that today. I don't know what the appropriate place to...
There's something in the paper today, too, about the other family, the Hispanic...
How they're distributing it, I'm not sure, it'd be interesting to find out.
Yeah, that's a really good point. And again, there will be a fundraiser for them on Sunday. They're doing cash donations at the door for this event at the Escobar patio from 11:00 to 2:00, so for anybody in the community who would like to contribute some money to those families. Any other open discussion, Steve?
Lee Mulcahy has been, done public comment about, maybe three times now, about his issue to us, and he's left materials with us. And I think it would, in fairness to him, I think we should have an analysis of that, perhaps by the attorney's office, just to then inform our board as to, you know, what, if anything, what the situation is, what, if anything, we should be aware of, or would possibly want to do.
Well, I have spoken with Lee directly, I have spoken with a member of city council, and apparently, what Lee is actually requesting, I think he's just documenting his issues to us and to the public, again, through our venue of public comment, he's asking the city for a mediation hearing before city council, which is not allowed under APCHA's rules and regulations, and the city has discussed whether they should allow him that hearing or not, and if so, it's really not allowed by the APCHA current rules and regs. So I think that's a discussion amongst the city. His issue, even though it is directed at APCHA, which we are part of, it's specifically directed toward actions of the city, because he's in city housing. So if we want the county attorney to take a look at it, I don't know what you'd be looking at, because I'm not sure what our role, maybe that's it. What role do we have, and if we have a role, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the answer is, we just sit back and watch what the city does, but I think, in fairness to Lee, I think we should look at it and get a legal, you know, a legal opinion, since we are part of APCHA, and we could weigh in or choose not to weigh in on the issue to the city.
So we'll ask for legal advice, maybe in our next executive session. Lee has not specifically asked the county to do anything for him. I think he, again, just wants to document this issue, and that's his right to come to public comment. Okay. Greg, do you have any public comment?
No.
Anymore?
Yeah, just a note for the board, and we'll get this framed up, but Greg Knott, from the Basalt, chief of the Basalt Police Department, did issue a, what's called a challenge coin.
Billis told us yesterday, did you bring it?
Oh, she did tell you yesterday, okay, great. I, no, it is not with me right now, but my intent would be to do a paragraph write-up on what it is, and frame it, and put it somewhere where all Picken County employees could see it, so...
That's great, that's a great idea.
The newsletter.
Okay, good.
Might have room for someone.
I thought you had it around your neck there.
No, no, that's our new IDs.
Oh, when, do we need to be doing that?
Yeah, we need to get you IDs.
Because either that, or we will not be allowed in the building soon. And maybe there's something behind that you're not telling us.
Possible.
All right, anything else? We're good? I do need a motion to adjourn, please. I will make a motion to adjourn, I can do that.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, grassroots.